One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All.
Thank you. Next item is the minutes. We have minutes from October 15 special meeting and the October 15 regular meeting.
Need approval, second?
Motion is second to approve both sets of meetings. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion's carried. Adoption of the agenda. Mike or John, do you know of any corrections, additions for...
Adoption?
Whatever he said, the second... Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carries. Visitors to be heard. Addressing the council, persons addressing the council shall use the microphone at the podium. Please raise your hand to be recognized, go to the podium, and state your name and address. For items that are not on the agenda, members of the public may speak under visitors to be heard on any topic not on the agenda. Excuse me. Remarks will be... are limited to five minutes and no decision will be made at this time. For agenda items, public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item. Public testimony will then be closed and the topic will be given to the governing body for possible action. At this point, only city council members and staff may discuss the current agenda item unless a council member moves to allow another person to speak and there's unanimous consent from the council. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or a member of the public through their presiding officer at any time. Is there anybody that has anything that is not on the agenda that they'd like to bring up? Seeing none, then we'll move on to public hearing on the special assess... wait a minute, wait a minute, we have a proclamation. Tom, if you'd read that, please.
Thank you. This is recognizing the importance of small business in, I think, this time of year and the importance to consumers of choice and... And competition as being healthy. This is proclamation, Recognizing Small Business Saturday. Whereas the city of Vermillion, South Dakota celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently thirty point two million small businesses in the United States. They represent ninety nine point seven percent of all businesses with employees in the United States and are responsible for sixty five point nine percent of net jobs created from two thousand to two thousand seventeen. And whereas small businesses employ forty seven point five percent of employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas ninety percent of consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has had a positive impact on their community. And whereas eighty nine percent of consumers who are aware of Small Business Saturday said the day encourages them to shop small all year long. And whereas Vermillion, South Dakota supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, we, the governing body of the city of Vermillion, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim November twenty four, twenty eighteen, as Small Business Saturday. And urge residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Dated in Vermillion, South Dakota, this fifth day of November, twenty eighteen.
Thank you, Tom. Now we'll go on to public hearings, and the first one is a public hearing on the special assessment role for sidewalk repairs in the southeast quadrant, and Jose, please.
Thank you. On January sixteenth, twenty seventeen, the city adopted a resolution adopting the resolution of necessity for the sidewalk reconstruction or repairs on the southeast port of... Part of Vermillion. The southeast part of the Vermillion quadrant would be anything south of Main Street and east of South Dakota Street. This work was completed and the final payment has been authorized. The special assessment was filed with the finance officer on October tenth, twenty eighteen. At the October fifteenth meeting, the city council approved the resolution setting to date today as the date to have a public hearing regarding this project. State statute, as all of you may know, requires a public hearing to be held to consider the assessment role. At this meeting, the city council would approve, equalize, or amend or reject the assessment role. Should be noted that since the meeting on October fifteenth, staff did find a mistake on the role or the resolution that was adopted by the council and published on the paper. The mistake was that an address listed on the resolution was the three twenty-three Lewis. Should have been, instead of that one, it should have actually been three twenty-three Linden. I realize that you guys don't have the addresses there, but we do, and that was how the mistake was made, I guess. It should have been Mr. Peterson's house, if I remember correctly, should have been removed. Regardless, as the public hearing was advertised, a notice sent to the property owners suggested that the city council receive any public input that... And then close the public hearing portion of it. The attached resolution shows the amendment amended portion of it. Staff recommends not adopting the attached resolution. Another hearing will be held on October nineteenth with the resolution to be adopted later in the agenda.
November?
Yes, November nineteenth.
I know we're going back, but... Has there any comment or question for Jose? So then are we just not accepting this one? Is that correct?
Yep, you're gonna be... you're not gonna be accepting this one, you're gonna be essentially rejecting it, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
And then later on, on the agenda, then we'll have the other.
The revised?
Yep.
Any comments or questions for Jose?
I do have a question mostly, again, out of curiosity, but some of the names on here, I have a feeling, and I don't know if you know for sure or not, they just... They just... this is how they just fix things and they let the city assess it and then they pay it and they don't have to go through, you know, finding somebody and all of that. Is that accurate at all?
I would say that, that yes. I think after... this is the second time that we have done this part of town, and that's the way it seems, I guess, up to this point. So it's... I would assume that for smaller projects, it might be more costly for them to do this, but it's easier at the same time because they don't have to worry about getting a contractor to just do one panel. Typically, they don't do that, so.
Anything else? Pleasure of the council?
Move rejection of the proposal, second?
Motion and a second to reject the proposal. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, no?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, Jose. Item B, lease for approximately two hundred and thirty acres of farmland east of Vermillion, and Mike, please.
In nineteen ninety-four, Kenneth Amakula left the city approximately two hundred and thirty acres of farmland east of Vermillion. The will provided the city lease the property on a cash basis with the rent being paid in advance for the best price upon the best terms the city is able to negotiate. To the greatest extent permitted by law, the city is to hold the property as its asset, utilize the proceeds thereof for the benefit of the Vermillion Golf Course. Since that time, the city has leased the farm ground. And state statute requires that the city enters into a lease that exceeds a hundred and twenty days or for an annual value exceeding five hundred dollars, a public hearing is required per the state statute. The state statute doesn't require bidding, just a public hearing to allow public input before the municipal own property is leased. A public hearing was advertised for the farmland lease. The city has advertised for bids for the farm ground. We advertised for three-year bids. The last bid we received was in November of fifteen for the year sixteen seventeen eighteen, which was sixty-six thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars per year. The advertising for bids were in the local papers, was also put on the city website, and bidding information was sent to nine bidders that had bid it in two thousand and fifteen. And there was at least two people that stopped into city hall and picked up bidding information. When bids were opened on November first, three bids were received. The bid tab is attached. The high bidder would have been Robert Solomon at fifty-two thousand two hundred and ten dollars. We had a bid from John Donley, forty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars per year, and another bid from Wade Larson. He staggered his bids a little bit, forty-seven thousand ninety-two dollars and fifty cents in nineteen. Forty-nine thousand, three ninety-two fifty in twenty, and twenty, and for twenty twenty-one was fifty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty. Following input from the public hearing, the council will need to consider approving the lease of city property unless additional information is received at the public hearing. Recommend that enter into a three-year lease with Robert Solomon for the fifty-two thousand two hundred and ten dollars per year for the three years.
Thank you, Mike. Comments, questions? I think this indicates farm prices because it's about twenty thousand less than the past three years.
I have my question, Your Honor, of market and overall prices. Just across the line, my wife has...
And Mike, remind me, is this... is there any adjustment for the states using some of the north side?
Have reduced the acres from two hundred and thirty-two acres it was to two hundred and thirty.
Okay.
It's a fraction thereof. I think they're taking one point nine acres or one point eight acres for a couple of years there.
So they're aware when they bid that that...
Yep, this was included in all the bidding documents and is gonna be... would be included in the lease document outlining the farm gr... The state needing that property for them two years.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have a quick one?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the... To win, yeah. To Bob Solomon. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. Thank you. Old business, second reading of ordinance thirteen eighty-eight to amend Title Nine, General Regulations, Chapter Ninety, Health and Safety, nuisances, Section ninety point oh one, noise prohibited. Section E, semi-tractors and prohibited noises, and James? Oh, there he is.
Thank you. As stated, this is the second reading of proposed ordinance number thirteen eighty-eight, noises prohibited. The first reading of proposed ordinance thirteen eighty-eight was approved at the October fifteenth city council meeting. No public comments have been received and also no changes have been made here in the second reading. At the two thousand and eighteen South Dakota Municipal League Conference, the street... city street superintendent Pete John was informed that the South Dakota Department of Transportation will provide and install street signs along state highways stating unmuffled dynamic engine braking prohibited at no cost as long as our city ordinance was to specify that unmuffled dynamic engine braking is prohibited. This requires a change in some language in our semi-tractor's prohibited noises ordinance. The ordinance currently states it shall be unlawful for any person to make or cause to be made loud or disturbing or offensive noises with any mechanical device operated by compressed air and used for purposes of assisting braking on any semi-tractor except for the aversion of imminent danger. The proposed ordinance would amend the language of mechanical device to unmuffled dynamic engine braking system through the Department of Transportation's recommendation. And then would also remove the phrase operated by compressed air.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for James? Steve?
I have a sort of silly question, I guess. Why is the state so interested in being so specific? Do you know?
Well, I believe that part of the reason is that the... Operated by compressed air, AKA air brakes, as they're called. So I've been told not all unmuffled braking systems use compressed air, so they're very specific in saying...
So we're actually the specific ones?
Correct.
We're being... we're... we're more than general.
We're not counting those that don't use air.
Very good.
Correct.
I moved this very important ordinance to...
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying... Oh, I've got it four times here, second reading. Is Don back there?
Yes.
Don, would you set the mechanics for us, please? The results are nine... I did turn it on, yeah, yeah. Nine, yes, and zero, no, so it has passed. Thank you. Oh, okay. I did it four times. I have every... second reading, second reading. All right, let's turn... turn to new business. First reading of ordinance thirteen ninety-one. Amending Appendix A, two thousand and twelve Joint Zoning Regulations for Clay County and the city of Vermillion, Chapter Two, Section two point oh three A zoning map by removing certain real property from the A-one agricultural district and including said certain real property in the... Our rural resident district, and Jose?
Thank you. Back in two thousand and twelve, the city and the county adopted a new zoning regulation for what we like to call the joint jurisdictional zoning area. That can be seen on my map not very well, but essentially this here would be existing city limits, the airports included and that. This blue line around there, around the city limits, would be the joint jurisdictional zoning area. Now, within that area, of course, everything outside of city limits and within that has zoning districts, and those would be either natural resource conservation, light industrial, commercial, you have rural residential, you have agricultural districts and so forth. Typically, everything right now is agricultural, A-one, so that's why there's... it just looks like there's nothing there, but in reality, it's just on all... it's pretty much all zone A-one. This ordinance amendment that's in front of you guys, or rezone, would actually be to rezone this portion here, Rolling Hills. This here, Silers, and this here, which would be the hillside portion of it. In the future, you will see three additional rezones, and those would be this here, the ranch estates. Then you will see Chosse over here, and then the one over here, if I remember right, I think that's Lols. Yeah, I think that's all subdivision. Anyways, but right now, we're just... we're just looking at these three areas. Those were approved by the city when the city actually had zoning jurisdiction outside of city limits. Now we do have this new arrangement with the county, so we're going through the process. The city and the county had a joint meeting, joint planning commission meeting on September twenty-fourth of this year. At that meeting, the... both of the planning commissions heard the public, or any public comments that they received. The public comments were answered and addressed as such. After all the comments were heard, both of the planning commissions recommended approval unanimously to their respective boards. Prior to that joint planning commission meeting, the city and the county also had another, just a general open meeting with the public that would have been affected with these rezones. At those meeting... at that meeting, we also answered questions and addressed concerns prior to the planning commission meeting that we had in the twenty-fourth. Just a little bit background, the existing code does allow for single-family residences to be constructed in the A-one district. The caveat is that the... it would actually have to be a conditional use permit. So that adds a little bit more of a... more time for the contractor or the builder that wants to build these houses. In addition to that, there can... there's a density requirement in the ordinance, so every quarter-quarter, you can only have three residential uses. So if there's already three houses within that quarter-quarter and I want to put a house in there, I just can't even do it. And because some of these areas are fairly dense for the county, then you might have a resident, I guess, that buys a parcel thinking that he could actually just go ahead and put a house, the lot might actually fit the lot, the minimum acre, minimum size requirement as far as the area. But then when he comes over to the county to get his building permit or apply for the conditional use, he can even go that far because it's... he already surpassed the density requirement. There are a couple of exceptions to the rule, and that's if it's a lot of record. So if the lot was plotted prior to the adoption of the ordinance back in two thousand and twelve, then he could actually go ahead and build a house or apply for the conditional use permit. Or if there's a... there's an existing house and the house burns down or some tragic accident happens, then he can actually go ahead and rebuild in that particular area. And I... as I mentioned, during the recent... during recent years, the city and the county has... have actually been receiving quite a few requests to build within these areas. But just because of the way that the lots are plotted or the fact that there's already enough too many houses or whatever the case may be, a lot of those have actually been denied. So just to make... and if they're not denied, then they have to go through the conditional use process, which tends to be pretty lengthy, even though it's just one meeting, simply because we have to get both of the boards together, so that kind of adds to the time. But, uh, let's see, once we rezone everything to rural residential, if that's what happens, then the single-family dwellings would actually be considered... Consider and allow use, and there's no density requirement, so then it would facilitate everything for the contractor, the residents, and the staff as well, both county and city. Staff recommends approval of the first reading. If the first reading is approved, the second reading of the ordinance would be a joint meeting with the county commissioners. The county commission will have their first reading of the ordinance at their November thirteenth meeting. The joint meeting is scheduled for December third, assuming that everything goes well.
Thanks, Jose. And does this omit the requirement of at least five acres?
There's no... there's no... the size requirement's actually two acres, if I remember correctly.
Two. Comments or questions for Jose?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the first reading of ordinance thirteen ninety-one. Steve?
Sorry, I wanted to ask a couple of questions.
Do I have to bring the map back?
This doesn't affect any relationship of these residents to the county or to the city, correct? Like, there's no tax?
No, there's no tax. That was actually one of the most asked questions at the meeting. There's gonna be no tax increases because the use is not gonna be changing. It's still a house, it's just now it's zoned correctly. This doesn't mean that the city is going to be annexing them three weeks later or anything of that sort. This doesn't mean that if you have a business there right now that you won't be able to run your business later on. There's... similar to the city, there's that item where it's grandfathered in, and if you stop the use for a year, then you can't do it anymore. If you have a hobby farm, you can continue the hobby farm, you just can't increase the size of it or anything of that sort. So it's... whatever you're doing now, you can continue on doing. It's just, yeah.
Just basically a change of name?
Yep, pretty much. At this point, yes.
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions? Tom?
Just a question in your expertise, that do you anticipate actual more single-family homes or more apartment buildings?
No, that would be single-family homes. I don't... if I remember correctly, there's no apartments in the... in the county. So, as far as the new ordinance.
Anything else? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. Thanks. Stick around, Jose, I think you have a few more items. Item B, resolution fixing the time and place for a hearing and notice of hearing on the special assessment role for sidewalk repairs southeast quadrant.
All right, so this is a continuation of the public hearing item. The public hearing earlier, I said that I made a mistake. I owned up to it. It's my fault. So, and I asked you guys to please reject that assessment, which you guys did, thank you. So now we're starting the process again with setting up the public hearing. So this one, as you can see, well, I... as I will say, the assessment role was originally filed on October tenth, like the memo says. And we amended the newest assessment role and filed it again with the city finance officer on October twenty-ninth. So you all know, we have to hold a public hearing, so this year is gonna be setting that public hearing. The cost... construction costs will be assessed, haven't changed. It's still at nine thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty cents. That does not, excuse me, include the administrative fee, which could either be fifty dollars or eight percent, whichever is greater. So with all that being said, administration recommends approving the resolution to set a hearing date for November nineteenth, twenty eighteen, for the special assessment role for the sidewalk repairs.
And move approval. Motion and a second to approve. Is that other... the one that was incorrect on the first one, is it in here now in this second one?
Yes, it is, but it's corrected, yeah. It would actually be... it would be on... I'm sorry?
Wasn't it Peterson?
Peterson's the one that we removed. If you go to page two of the actual resolution, it would be Ms. Deborah K. Mays towards the...
Oh, I see.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. Item C, resolution of necessity and notice of hearing for construction of concrete surfacing on Hawthorne Street from Anderson Street to the east side of Harrison Street. Again, Jose, please.
Thank you. Hawthorne Street is... you may see here shortly, there it is. Okay, so Hawthorne Street, this would be Anderson. North is that way. Clark would be somewhere up there. Main Street would be up here somewhere. So Hawthorne Street is east-west route right now. That would be dead ends at a... Or starts at Anderson and goes east towards a dead end right now. At some point, it's supposed to continue further on. Harrison Street would be right here, roughly speaking, some... somewhere. There's not... it's plotted, it's just not built at this point. So the city... oh, just another tidbit, that street has been gravelled with curb and gutter since nineteen ninety-five. At that point, that's when it was originally built. The city did receive a petition to pave Hawthorne Street November second of this year. The petition was signed by all the required... We do have a majority, I guess, of the fronting... of the frontage that was required by statute. And we do, I think I'm... I included the petition in the packet as well for your review. The special assessment process provides that the government governing body do two things. One, set a public hearing, and then two, notify all the property owners of the public hearing by both sending notices and publishing the notice on the newspaper. The notice calls for the public hearing to be held on November nineteenth of this year. Following the construction, then the city will finalize assessment role, put it on the books, and have another meeting like we just... like you guys just approved as far as proving a resolution and public hearing and all that good stuff. Hopefully, I don't mess up that time. Regardless, financial consideration, the cost will include postage and publication of the notice. The city has not budgeted for this improvement. As such, the budget will have to be revised during the two thousand and nineteen budget session. The estimated cost for construction... for constructing paving of the street is seventy-three thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. is $73,634.56. Administration recommends adoption of the resolution that sets a public hearing date for November 19th and provides for notice of the, to the pub, to the property owners.
Is there a reason the estimated assessment is different from the estimated cost?
Should be the same.
Well, we do, they have one for the intersection, which is not assessed, Jose?
No, 'cause... Oh, I see. It's a little bit less actually because the, yep, it's a little bit less because the, the petition, when the petition was originally filed, it was assumed that the city, the city actually did the 8% fiscal fee. And then the item that I have on the resolution is, includes a consultant cost, which is less. So that's the difference.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
Is there any, remind me of the timeline again. Is there any way there could be a savings or anything like that in conjunction with Anderson Street?
Yes, there would be a saving, and that's something that we'll probably talk, I guess, of the following item as well, if you so choose. But we're gonna be asking that the, that the construction schedule be actually, allow the contractor to finish in November, November 1st, similar to what we did on Jefferson. That's one of the biggest requests that we received with Jefferson, extending the construction schedule so the contractor could have more time to work on it. So we're gonna be hopefully doing something similar to this. And if it's so, if it pans out, then we want to have Anderson and Hawthorne happen at the same time by the same contractor, and with that extended schedule, so that way they could have hopefully a savings.
Thank you. I move approval of adopting a resolution setting a public hearing for November 19th.
Motion to second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thanks, Jose. Item D, engineering agreement with Banner Associates, Inc. for design of Anderson Street between East Clark Street and East Main Street, and Hawthorne Street from Anderson Street to the east side of Harrison Street. Again, Jose.
Thank you. Anderson Street was built in 1981. It's an asphalt road. Since then, the city has milled and overlaid it once and done three chip seals to it. Over the years, the road has deteriorated due to burst upgrades and as far as an inadequate pavement section. Additionally, multiple street cuts have affected the rigibility or the rig quality of the street. This exhibit here shows Clark Street, Main Street. The high school would be right here for reference. Jefferson is right there. This would be Hawthorne, as far as the street that you guys just approved the resolution to pave. And the project that you guys are gonna be hopefully awarding here for engineering agreement would be for Anderson, all the way from Maine, or from Maine to Clark, and then Hawthorne Street as well. Right now, as I said, Hawth, or Anderson is asphalt road. And like I said, it's in pretty poor shape up, up to now. As I mentioned, in conjunction with Anderson, the streets, the city's also asking, asked Banner to provide a cost for the design of Hawthorne Street from Anderson to the east side of Harrison. In order to complete the reconstruction of Anderson Street, engineering plans and construction documents need to be completed and sent out. This, the way that the city does this is that the city chooses a consultant from a pre-approved list of consultants. The consultant that's chosen completes the engineering plans and provides the city with technical specifications. At a later time than the city completes, or at first, the city actually completes a survey portion of it. And then we also complete the horizontal layouts. And once we get all the technical specifications for, from the consultant, then we also complete the bidding documents. The city also handles the bidding process. If there's any questions during the bidding process, then we do consult, sometimes we do consult with the consultant that was chosen. This process, as I mentioned before, of selecting our consultant follows industry standard of choosing one based on qualifications rather than cost. This process, it's called a consultant, it's called qualifications-based award essentially. Excuse me, and it's proven, it's been, it's a proven, she didn't say proven, but it's essentially something that the American Public Works Association, the American Bar Association, the American Institute of Architects, and several other organizations approve of or consider as a positive in order to foster creativity and flexibility and provide a good professional services, I guess, to municipalities, state, and counties and so forth. This process for selecting a consultant was used for Anderson Street and Hawthorne Street. The consultant costs for Anderson Street and Hawthorne are separate in case the public does not want Hawthorne Street to be constructed. The engineering agreement with Banner Associates has followed the process stated above. The tax agreement is the scope of services and engineering costs. The city's engineering cost for Banner and, for Anderson Street, from Banner, for Anderson Street would be $25,350. This would be paid out of the capital projects fund that will be funded from the STIP funds. This fund would have to be revised later this year to cover the cost. The engineering cost for, from Banner, for Hawthorne Street would be assessed to the adjacent property owners, and this is $4,500 as opposed to the $6,800 that was, that would have been the 8% cost originally estimated by the city. Staff recommends allowing the city manager to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city with Banner Associates for engineering services to complete the design of Anderson Street from Clark, from East Clark to East Main, and contingent upon the November 19th resolution of necessity for Hawthorne Street from Anderson Street to the east side of Harrison Street.
Thanks, Jose. Comments, questions? Counsel?
I have a question. Tom? I, I'm curious to know whether Anderson will remain with, with a little curve on the south end, or will it be straightened?
No, it's gonna stay the way it is. I don't know why that's there.
Maybe a past engineering officer or something.
Do you want to take that?
It just shows up on the map.
There's a kink on Anderson. Yeah, so I don't know. As far as I know, there's no need for it. I don't know if that's just the way when Potters was platted, that's addition, there was, they just put a kink in it just for the haircut? Yep, it's right here. Yep.
It's in lieu of a speed bump. Do we have a motion or?
I have no approval.
Motion and a second to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item E, approval of appraisals for 820, 904, and 912 West Broadway Street, and to permit city staff to commence annual, I'm sorry, negotiations with the owners for acquiring the necessary easements. Jose?
Thank you. The city received a grant, I guess, back in 2000, early 2000s, if I remember correctly, from the former senator, Mr. Tim Johnson. The money was, has been utilized in the path for constructing bike trails around the community. A portion of this path constructed with part of this money was the one, see if this works. The trail, the path actually was, goes from 12th Street way over here, all the way to West Street over there. So, and this would be the Vermillion River right along there. This path was constructed pretty close to the existing bank at the time of the Vermillion. Soon after it was constructed, in 2010, the river, we actually, during construction during 2009 and early 2010, the city actually experienced some flooding along the river. And after the water receded, we noticed that there were some areas that started to settle. So it's not like the bank just eroded away or anything of that sort. One of the portions that we started to notice settling was over here by the Taggards' property. And soon after that happened, we closed the bike trail at that location. A little bit further, or a little bit later, in 2010, we noticed that there was another location over here by Mr. Grous, Mr. Grous' property, as far as some settling again on the bike trail falling into the river and so forth. So at that point, then we decided to close it all the way to 12th Street. So since 2010, we have actually not had a bike trail in this portion of the city, even though it was completed, just because of these two items. The city did choose to not address the issues right at the moment because whenever we did go ahead and do something, then it would just go back into the river. So we were pretty sure that the settling process was not completed, and we wanted to finish, wait for it to be finished. We did talk during that time, we did talk to experts, whether it be geological engineering, or whatever the case may be, or people that were very professionals, I guess, regarding the river. And they pretty much just said, you know, this is a natural process, that you're gonna be fighting the entire time, so you might as well just wait for it to stop in the meantime, and then in that time, look for another avenue, I guess, or another solution to the problem. So with that being said, we did look at two options. We looked at the option of going around the areas that were falling into the river, or we looked at another option that went all the way around because of difficulties that the city foresaw as far as with some of the neighbors, and the fact that if we would have not corrected the situation, we would have actually had to pay the federal government portion of that grant with the understanding that even after we pay for that portion of the grant, if we close it and we choose not to do that, that the, more than likely, the public was gonna be asking for a bike trail regardless from here to there. We have decided, the council directed staff to go along with this option here, which is just rerouting around those two portions. Staff has, has had several meetings, three meetings, I guess, with the adjacent property owners. There would be three. There's one here, Mr. Grous, and the Taggards. At those three meet, after those three meetings, it was agreed that the city should at least continue the process and have the properties appraised to see if, after the appraisals come in, to actually have a meaningful conversations with the property owners to see if it can go any further than that. We do have a table showing what the appraisals came in at. There are two types of appraisals that were, or easements that we would getting, we'd be getting a temporary easement from the Taggards, and that easement would actually be, for the temporary one, would be $245.27 from the Taggards. We would also be getting a permanent easement, and that would be $9,392.40. And then from the Grouses, we would getting two easements as well. One is a temporary for $129.06, and a permanent one for $5,000, $5,865 flat. Again, these, this is the way that I see, this is just a starting point. So it's gonna be a conversation that we're gonna be having with the property owners and so forth. If, assuming that the city is able to acquire the easements quickly, construction of the damaged sections would then be completed by the end of the 2019 construction season. We still have to talk to the DOT about some of these aspects. We do have to work with them very closely in this, just because there's federal funds tied to it. So some of our timetables are tied to their timetables. So even though we might want this to happen tomorrow morning, we might have to wait till much, much later. We have some money left over from the, from the original grant. The city will, it's roughly $85,000 that we have left over. We are utilizing portions of that money for the engineering portion of it, which we do, which we have to have according to the feds. And then the money that we do have left over, we will be using during construction or construction administration. Administration recommends approving the appraisals and permitting staff to commence the negotiations with the owners to acquire the easements.
Have you had any conversations with them yet?
Ever since we received the, the appraisals, no.
Questions? Tom?
Do we anticipate the state moving any more rapidly or anything like that in this whole process, or?
No, I think the state moves at the state's pace, and we just work with it.
Well, I, I, I think we need to try to move and, and I, I move approval of the appraisals and have the staff commence negotiations, and let's get going.
Thank you.
Motion and a second to approve the recommended plan. Any further comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you. I was afraid you were gonna read these three things to us. Next, we have annual write-off of old accounts receivables. Mike?
The city bills for utilities, landfill fees, ambulance service, and other miscellaneous items such as grass and snow tagging, mowing or snow removal, damage to city property or debris removal. The billings are considered accounts receivable in the city and such are recorded as revenue and receivable on our accounting records. To remove uncollectible items, the city council must take action as required per state law. The action is to remove them from the accounting records, but collection efforts will still continue. Accounts have been sent to small claims court or a collection agency unless they were discharged in bankruptcy. The listing of accounts are in file in the finance office. As individual accounts are confidential, the list of individual names and amounts has not been included in the packet. I've attached a spreadsheet summarizing the account write-off for the last 10 years. Administration would recommend the removal. Our city council authorized the removal of the old utility accounts, $34,258.80. General accounts receivable of $2,787.41. Return checks, $215.32. And ambulance accounts receivable, $91,026.78 from the accounting records, but to continue the collection efforts. The summary there for the 10 years shows, at least in our utility accounts, we're just at about a third of 1% that we're writing off of what was billed during that time period. So I think we're pretty good there. That's the larger number of billing in there.
Do you have any sense of how much, or kind of percentage-wise, you've been able to collect after the fact?
Well, we collect usually 2,000 to 5,000 a year. It's not big numbers, but stuff does come in.
A motion and a second to approve the write-off of old accounts receivable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Next item is Labor and Finance Committee report. John?
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you. As counsel knows, we do have three union agreements, one with our FOP, Lodge Number 19, and then we have two different agreements with AFSMI. Labor and Finance Committee has been helping with this process to kind of set the framework and the guidelines with all three of these, but we have reached a tentative agreement first with the Fraternal Order of Police, Number 19. And included in your packet is kind of a list of some of the changes that would be incorporated into the proposed agreement. I'll just kind of run through those real quick to give you some background of those. It would also be for a three-year agreement that would cover 2019, 20, and 2021. It does provide for cost of living adjustment of 2 and 1/4% for January of 19, 2 and 1/2% for calendar 2020, and 2 and 1/2% for calendar 2021. For police officers, those working in law enforcement between 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM, there's what's called a shift differential currently, and for several years, that has been 75 cents an hour. January 1st of 2020, with this proposal, that would go to a dollar per hour. Our certified training officers, as we have new officers that are training, they're under the guidance of a certified training officer. And when an officer or other individuals performing that function, they do receive an additional wage just for the hours in which they're providing training. So with, and that amount has currently been a 5% increase for those hours. With this proposal, January of 2020 would go to 6%, and then in January of 2021, it'd go to 7%. The employees do have an 11-step pay scale that they can move through over the course of their employment with the city. With this proposal, the, a 12th step would be added beginning in January of 2020, and you'd have to qualify to move to any of those steps based on the length of time with the city and a successful performance evaluation. Then one other change, I guess, that I might mention as well is that we had quite a bit of discussion about additional holidays, and so the, the proposal was a personal, an additional personal leave day, and that would become effective in 2019. For law enforcement, basically, they receive a bucket in which they can utilize these hours during the course of the year, but this would keep them similar to what's proposed for the other agreements as they work their way to a conclusion. So anyway, I just want to give you kind of a brief overview of that. At this point, I think the Labor and Finance Committee is asking the council to accept the report. We are working on the documentation, and we would have an agreement with FOP to hopefully present to you at the November 19th meeting, which would include the terms... which would include the terms that I've just referenced here.
Thank you, John. Comments or questions for John? Move we accept the report? Motion is second to accept the report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Please accept it. The next item is Utilities Committee report. And again, John, please.
Thank you. This committee's been busy. At least these two committees. I've had a few items come up as of late. Our Utilities Committee met with respect to electable service territory. There are two lots at the northeast corner of Duke in Princeton Street that prior to 2014 had been included in the Clay Union Electric Service Territory. In 2014, the map's on file with Public Utilities Commission and signed off on by both the city and Clay Union Electric, placed these two lots into the city's service territory. One of those two lots has a twin home on it that Clay Union Electric has been serving since 2006. The other lot is scheduled to begin development. You can kind of see there's a fence and some other work that's starting to take place there. What that brought forward is the fact that it's in the... Listed in the city's electric service territory maps since 2014. But it would appear that Clay Union Electric, it might be a lot that they would serve. We met with Utilities Committee back in October at 11th and they kind of gave staff directions and some guidance with respect to visiting with Clay Union Electric about this. We did have a meeting with Clay Union Electric following on the 16th and then their board on the 25th heard that proposal from Clay Union Electric staff. In essence, what we would bring forward to the council at the next meeting would be a memorandum of understanding that we would work together to place those two lots in the Clay Union Electric Service Territory. And as part of that exchange, the city does make lost revenue payments for service territory that has been annexed into the city's service territory. The next two lots that would be issued a building permit in the Bliss Point subdivision, the city would not pay the lost revenue payments for those two lots. It was kind of the agreement that we worked out. It seemed to be acceptable to the Clay Union Electric staff and their board. So at this point, I think Utilities Committee is asking the council to accept the report and we will develop an MOU that'll summarize this and present that to the city council at the next meeting on November 19th.
Thank you, John. It would only be for lots... I'm sorry. Motion is second. I was just going to comment that I think the lots in Bliss would only be those that are currently in Clay Union's territory.
Correct. There's, I want to say approximately nine lots that this could apply to, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, it just isn't... Any lot that's out there. Okay, any other comments? There's a motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Carries, thank you, John. Next item is bid openings and fuel quotes. Mike?
I've got fuel quotes in front of you and on the screen. Unleaded gasoline, the first quote's from Stern Oil of $2.21.6. Item two is number one and number two diesel fuel. The blended cost is $2.59.85. Item three is number one and number two diesel fuel clear. The blended cost is $2.89.85. Second quote's from Burnick Service on item one, $2.21. Item two, $2.62. Item three, $2.92. Burnick's would be low on item one and Stern Oil would be low on two and three.
Thank you, Mike. Counsel? Motion is second to approve the low bids. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries, thank you. Item B, sale or surplus for vehicles and equipment. Jose?
Thank you. All of the vehicles that have been sold through sealed bids were either replaced or in the 2018 budget year or they were scheduled for retirement from the city fleet. The Surplus Property Committee for the city appraised the vehicles is listed on the table. Bids were sent out to eight potential bidders. The city received four bids total. There is a table attached there with all the bids received and the highlight at once for the high bids. The only bid for the 1992 Brush Bandit Model 200 Plus was from Mr. Brian Alderson from Hartford. His bid was for $6,000. The high bid for the 2006 Chevy Silverado was for $2,289 and that's from Chicago Motors out of Chicago. And the high bid for the 2015 Chevy Tahoe, the police package one, was for $21,207, again from Chicago Motors out of Chicago. No bids were received on the 2002 Ford Taurus or the 2004 Ford Basket Truck. At a later meeting, the city will be reappraising the 2002 Taurus and hopefully at that point, it can be sold at the city's spring auction. Regarding the 2004 Basket Truck, the city has been contacting Clay County Highways... The Clay County Highway Department to see if they're interested in purchasing the vehicle. They had actually contacted us regarding that prior. So we know they wanted to, so we haven't been able to get in touch with each other. Revenue from the sales is going to be going to the Equipment Replacement Fund. Administration recommends awarding the sale of the 1992 Brush Bandit Model 200 Plus to Mr. Brian Alderson for $6,000. The 2006 Chevy Silverado to Chicago Motors from Chicago for $2,289. And the 2015 Chevy Tahoe to Chicago Motors from Chicago, Illinois for $21,207.
Thank you, Jose. Comments, questions? Appraisal pencil wasn't real sharp, huh?
Move we approve the sale of surplus for vehicles and equipment? Second.
Motion is second to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Carries, thanks, Jose. Next is City Manager Report. John?
Thank you. Just a reminder that parking will be removed at North Dakota Street from Alumni Street to Highway 50. And that Rose Street will be closed from Spruce Street north to the Dome. And that's on USD Football Saturdays. The final home game is this Saturday, November 10th. And so that parking will be removed and Rose Street will be closed. The landfill is back to our winter hours. So the landfill is not open on Saturdays during winter hours, but it is open Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. Hats off to our fire department. We recently received notice with respect to the ISO rating. It has... Impacts typically businesses and homeowners' fire insurance for individuals living inside the city. We did maintain the three rating, which the lower the number, the better. One of only a handful of cities in our state that has a rating that low. And then the good news for individuals that are within five miles of a city fire hydrant, their ISO fire rating will drop from a nine to a six. That'll be as of February 1st of next year. The Planning Commission will likely have a meeting on Monday, November 26th at 5:30 here at City Hall. And the agenda item is consideration of a design for a stealth tower to be located at 105 Market Street. We received the preliminary information with regard to their application. They're making some revisions to that, but we should have that this week. And so we anticipate that getting that, that that will be in time for the meeting on Monday, November 26th. And then just a reminder, if anybody didn't know, tomorrow is Election Day and Vermillion residents can vote at the Armory, 603 Princeton Street from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Thank you, John. Comments or questions for City Mayor? Tom?
Having done a history of the fire department and a lot of that involved city minutes and again, Mike, thanks for access to those. That fire rating is extremely important to businesses especially. And twice in our history, that has come up as a threat and has resulted in, for example, our first fire truck was a result of the possibility of ratings going down and some other improvements. So I just thought I'd point that out. I'd also like to say thank you to Aaron McDowell, who is unfortunately leaving us. He's been very instrumental in the last brief time, but very effective time as the deputy chief of our Vermillion Fire and EMS Department. And he's leaving us and going back to Montana. And I wish him well and thank him for his service.
Okay, other comments? Thank you, John. Invoices payable. Any questions for Mike?
Move we pay our bills, second?
Motion is second to pay our bills. All in favor signify by...
Aye.
Motion carries, Steve. Second. Motion is second to adjourn. All in favor? Oppose, no. Motion carries.